Good afternoon. Wanted to call back in the session, the, excuse me, December 12th, 2017 meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and we, little bit of a late start from the two o'clock session, but our morning session ran through almost to two o'clock between the open and closed session. So with that being said, we certainly welcome all of you to the afternoon session. We have still a pretty full agenda, so we'll do our best to work our way through that as we take the items in order here this afternoon. So with that, if you'd call or roll to establish a quorum, please.
Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. And I would just note, if you're here to speak to any item that's on the agenda or not on the agenda, we'd certainly ask that you fill out a speak identification form and get that to Ms. Evans or Stephanie in the back there, and we'll call upon you at the appropriate time.
I'm going to go ahead and call item 11. It was held from this afternoon. Are we ready? Okay. Item 11 from the consent calendar is authorize the execution of a First Amendment to Personal Services Agreement with Bender Rosenthal for expanded real estate appraisal services pertaining to County Department of Transportation, Fair Oaks Boulevard Improvement Project Phase Three, Marconi Avenue to North Avenue.
Okay. Supervisor Peters.
Hi. Basically, the question is wanting to explore what you mean by due to unforeseen project engineering modifications. Some reports completed under the agreement require revisions. It doesn't really explain what those are, other than you have to get some additional right-of-way. And I don't understand why it costs $100,000 to do that. And is it appraisals that were already completed that need to be expanded, or is it new appraisals?
Yeah, Mike Morse, Department of General Services. As I understand it, there were some nuances in the driveway slope in particular, and that when they had to do some re-engineering redesign on that, it did impact the temporary construction easements and actually incurred a little further into the property. So they had to reevaluate those valuations. And we are back in negotiations with those property owners again. Two of those were unaffected. Of the other nine, I believe, I think we have two that have signed, and we are still in discussions with the others. So there was some reappraisals that needed to be done.
The county's going to take more property. So that's the... But I just don't understand why it costs $100,000.
Why it's how much?
$100,000. Why is it going to cost $100,000 now?
No, the, actually, the increase at this point is from the original 50s. It's currently at 62,500. With these revaluations and renegotiations with that, there's always ifs, ands, buts, or maybes on what we will agree to. And our intent was to request the additional 50 to allow for those modifications and renegotiations. Don't necessarily intend to have to use all of that. Any of that that is not used goes back into the project budget, but this just gives us some flexibility for those additional valuations that may be required.
Well, it says raise the maximum contract amount to 100,000, not up to 100,000.
Up to 100, from...
That isn't what it says.
It was the initial 50 up to 100.
And so the budget was...
That isn't what it says.
Yeah.
It's not what it says, Mike. Because the point is, is that it just, it doesn't say up to. It says raise it to. It doesn't say up to. It just says raise it to.
Yeah, raise the maximum con... to 100,000. Yeah, correct. I'm sorry.
Okay, but you're verbally saying up to, and the staff report says to. Sorry to be a wordsmith here, but it's, it looks like you're doubling the amount of the contract.
We actually are doubling the not to exceed amount from the original 50 up to 100,000.
Okay, Mike. It doesn't say up to.
Supervisor Peters, I think we need to amend the staff report. Say that up to. And I think if the clerk can make that note, that staff report should say up to.
Okay, so there's that part. Then, in the original appraisal on these 11 properties, was the scope that the contractor, the Bender Rosenthal given, was it incorrect? I mean, what happened that you had to, you're here to, for a larger take?
I'm going to ask our DOT expert to come and respond to that.
Mr. White.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Peters. In response to your question, after our initial meetings with the property owners, which was following the initial offers, the property owners were losing some parking spaces, and they asked us to reconfigure some of the parking lots and also some of the driveway conforms. So the purpose of these reappraisals is to address additional temporary construction easement to reconfigure the parking lots. And that's going to cost the 11, $12,000. The remaining 37, $38,000, that takes us up to 100,000. The intent of that is if any of these parcels go to eminent domain, Bender Rosenthal would have to do expert testimony, depositions, that type of activities. So by having that extra money in there as well, we avoid delays when we get to eminent domain because we'll already have them onboard. But right now, we're just authorizing the additional 11 or $12,000 to reappraise the temporary construction easement, following up on our meetings with the property owners.
Okay, but who, who laid out the original take that, knowing that, that we're taking more parking spaces, and now we're back to saying we need more space than we needed in the first place? Is that an engineering firm? Is that DOT?
We laid out the original design, and we've reconfigured the parking lot as we saw, as we thought was the best configuration. Subsequent to that, we met with property owners, and based on their needs, they didn't like the configuration we came up with and asked us to change it. And in changing it, we ended up having to slurry seal and restripe a larger portion of some of these parking areas. And hence the change.
Thank you. Move the item.
We're seconding then to approve item 11. No one signed to speak. It was continued from this morning. Assistant Calendar. Okay. Seeing and recognizing there was a correction in the staff report. It's up to. That's for the record. All right. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
All right. Thank you. Thanks. Okay. Next item.
Item 67 is our two o'clock item. Resolution of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Action to Acquire Real Property for the Old Florintown Streetscape Improvement Phase Two Project, Power Inn Road to Florin Perkins Road. Nguyen Thong Nguyen and Lee Thai Nguyen, husband and wife, as tenants in common, as to an undivided 50% interest. And Thin T Nguyen and Lan T Lam, trustees of the Thin T Nguyen and Lan T Lam Living Trust, as to an undivided 50% interest located at 8149 Florin Road. And the environmental document is initial study addendum.
Good afternoon again. Mike Morse.
Mike.
Director of General Services. I'm here to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interests for the Old Florintown Streetscape Project. This project involves traffic signal modifications, as well as the installation of sidewalks, bike lanes, landscaping, and a number of streetscape improvements within the Old Florintown Main Street Corridor. The subject property is located on the north side of Florin Road, approximately 550 feet west of Power Inn Road at 8149 Florin Road. The lot is approximately 2.81 acres in size and is vacant. The total property interest required for the project easements consists of 11,125 square feet. Staff is recommending adoption of the resolution of necessity relative to easement for public roadway and public utilities, easement for public utilities and public facilities, and easement for temporary construction required for this project. There is no executed purchase agreement to date, although staff has made a number of contacts with the owner as outlined in the history of owner contacts in your board materials. The county obtained an appraisal from an independent appraiser, and then commensurate with the appraised value, the county presented an offer to the property owners of, for the purpose of the easements. But we have been unable to reach an agreement on a purchase price for these easements. As required by law, county also informed the owners of their right to obtain an independent appraisal for which the county will pay the reasonable cost up to a maximum of $5,000, subject to certain conditions. We are seeking approval of the RON today to ensure the project stays on schedule. However, we will continue to reach out to the owner to reach an agreement. Notification of the intention to seek approval of the RON was mailed to the property owner at least 15 days prior to the scheduled hearing. And if you have any questions regarding this project, I have staff available to address those.
Is that certified mail?
Yes, sir.
And the last contact we had was September 29th with the property owners at the last contact. That's the last we have on the sheet that was given to us. It's been 10 weeks since we had contact with folks?
I believe we had one, there's contact from them just within the last about week or 10 days.
Okay, something that wouldn't have made the staff report. So you've had more recent contact with them.
That's correct.
Thanks. Okay. I don't know if anybody signed up. Is there someone here to speak to this item, item 67, the resolution necessity for 8149 Florin Road? Okay, I don't see anyone.
Not a move the item. It's true.
Second.
Okay. All right, it's moved to the second. So let me be clear. Is anybody here on 8149 Florin Road? Okay. All right, please vote.
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thanks.
Item 68 is the resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property for the Asphalt Concrete Overlay Project, Folsom Boulevard. Golden Dragon 888 LLC, a limited liability company, as sole member of Independent Gold Exchange. The, located at 9509 Folsom Boulevard, the environmental document is a categorical exemption.
Good afternoon. Mike Morse, Director of General Services, and I'm here to introduce this item, which recommends a board approval for a resolution of necessity authorizing eminent domain action to acquire real property interests for the Asphalt Concrete Overlay Project on Folsom Boulevard. This project will involve the overlay of rubberized asphalt concrete along Folsom Boulevard between Butterfield Way and Bradshaw Road. The project will include repairing damaged pavement areas, pavement grinding, paving, and striping the roadway, and installing infill sidewalks. The subject property is located on the north side of Folsom Boulevard, just east of Butterfield Way, at 9509 Folsom Boulevard. The property is nearly rectangular in shape. It has approximately 149.5 feet of frontage along Folsom Boulevard, and is approximately 596 feet deep. The property totals approximately two acres and is currently improved with a motel. The property interests required for the project are an easement for public roadway and public utilities, consisting of 805 square feet, and a temporary construction easement of 2,277 square feet. The owner of record of the subject property is a dissolved limited liability company, but due to complex legal issues with the title, they do not have the legal authority to convey these easement interests to the county at this time. Consequently, an eminent domain action is necessary to secure the easement interests required to keep the project on schedule. The county obtained an appraisal for, from an independent appraiser, and commensurate with that appraised value, an offer was presented to the property owner for the purchase of the easements. As required, the county also informed the property, the owners of their right to obtain an independent appraisal for which the county would pay reasonable costs. Notice of intention to seek approval of the attached resolution of necessity was mailed to the property owner at least 15 days prior to the scheduled hearing. Have any questions?
The question I have, Mike, again, wasn't clear from the exhibits. And what I took from the written report is that we're going to acquire this for, to move the utilities to the back of sidewalk? Is that right? Or are we going to put this, are we putting a sidewalk in? It looks like from the rough maps we have that, you know, it's not consistent along that north side. I'm familiar with the project. So we say temporary construction easement. For what purpose? I mean, if you're just, if you're doing overlay, unless we're building sidewalks there or putting utilities, we have the two motels there.
Yeah, there will be some, some grinding work there and repairs of the pavement and adding the infill sidewalks as well.
So this, this is getting infill sidewalks?
Yes.
Okay. I guess I didn't read that. And I read this a couple times. It just said, we need to repave and restripe, and they'll do infill sidewalks. We're doing infill sidewalks along that, and that's what the, the easement's being acquired for, the right-of-way?
In part, yes.
Okay. Here comes Reza. Because you had the two motels. You have Vincennes and Casa Linda. This is the Casa Linda property, if I'm not mistaken.
Good afternoon, Reza Amogesi.
Hi, Reza.
That's correct. There's a missing section that we are trying to improve with sidewalks. And that, the construction easement is for that purpose.
No chance you can buy the whole motel? I'm serious. It's one of those, right next door, too. No, I know, not for Rover.
Perhaps.
Wow.
Would be outside of the road right-of-way.
No, I know. Good answer, Mr. Amogesi. So, okay. All right. Very good. Thanks. Okay, so is anyone here on 9509 Folsom Boulevard? Okay, seeing none, then I would move the staff recommendation. We'll continue work with the property owner.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 69, Request for County Contribution to Financially Support Construction of Veterans Village Located at the Former Mather Air Force Base.
Okay. Givens, we cut you short the last time on this one. So you've got a piece of this coming back, and you did a very abbreviated presentation the last time. And I think that as a part of this, we'll take action on what's being proposed here today. But I, we will have to come back another time to finish off what you didn't get, what you got started last time, so.
Duly noted.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Troy.
Good afternoon. My name is Troy Givens. I'm here to present a request for funding for support of Phase Two of the Mather Veterans Village Project. The request came from the city of Rancho Cordova, and the property is located at the Mather Commerce Center within the city limits of Rancho Cordova. Today, I'll provide you with some brief background on the project, review of the request, and then staff's recommendation. Regarding background, the request before you is a product of a previous board hearing that you just made mention of Supervisor Natoli to discuss Mather properties. This request was advanced due to time sensitivities to secure funding for Phase Two and construction of the ultimate project. The development team, and we have representatives from the development team here today, is led by Mercy Housing of California and the Veterans Resource Centers of America. The Veterans Village Project itself consists of three phases on 3.65 acres. Phase One, which has been completed, consists of 44 one-bedroom units and six two-bedroom units of permanent supportive homes. You have an attachment in your report that highlights both the site, the amenities, and the services.
Can you put out an overhead?
One more time.
Okay.
Phase Two, which is what the request specifically relates to, is to rehabilitate the former United States Air Force building on the site into a low-barrier 46-bed transitional housing facility for chronically homeless and disabled veterans. The facility will also house the supportive services of the overall development. Phase Three consists of 50 new permanent supportive housing units for homeless veterans, similar to the design of Phase One that's already existing. The request itself is from the city of Rancho Cordova for $1 million to support construction of Phase Two of the project, which is outlined in your staff report. If approved, the one-time monies would come from budget contingency funds. To date, the county has contributed $1.8 million in land and property to this project, a $1 million grant used for construction of Phase One, and commitment of 75 housing vouchers valued at $540,000 annually. These vouchers are critical for the developer to secure financing for this type of project. So these investments, coupled with the city of Rancho Cordova's resources and staff time, have served as a catalyst for this project to become a reality. Our staff recommendation, staff is recommending approval of this $1 million request. The request supports significant investment that both the county and the city have made in the Veterans Village Project. And this is to support housing homeless veterans from the greater Sacramento area. There are also synergies at this site, because as you probably are all aware, we have the Veterans Administration Hospital located at this Commerce Center as well. So we have services available on the site. The recommendations and the authority to execute a funding agreement with the city are contained within the recommendations on page one of your report. And we also have representatives from the city of Rancho Cordova and the development team here today, if you have questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Troy. And I'll turn my colleagues just a moment for questions. The, maybe if they can't get the overhead, I mean, put the overhead up, and if we can't get the PowerPoint, and maybe if you have that, just, I think it would show for those that are tuning in from a distance to at least see what the first phase of the permanent supportive housing units. Thanks, Troy. Maybe they can bring that up a little bit.
Your phone.
Very good. No, that's good. Thank you for doing that. And I want to thank certainly our staff for the quick turnaround on the requested item. And I would notice in the staff report, again, it's not tied to the sales, but we do, we did have the sale of the property. I don't know if we've received the, received the funds yet from the...
That property has closed.
It did. So Veterans Administration, about $2.9 million, and we certainly had, in previous budget actions, put that into the general fund. And I think this request, obviously, was outstanding of the time. It hadn't come to the full understanding, but we're here today, and I think it makes great sense in light of not only homeless initiatives that we've taken on as a county, but particularly with the Mather Complex, the reuse, and rededication of some of the funds that come from the sale of property to the Veterans Administration for, I assume, for additional support facilities that they'll construct over time on their own schedule and with their own funding. But this, you know, the first phase, if folks haven't had a chance to visit it, and I know some on this board have, if not all, again, the, you know, the good work goes on there. I think the housing for homeless veterans, the transitional piece, which some of those renovations had been at least started, and what this will bring, this county's contribution in addition to the land that we made previously available, I think brings a lot of energy and hope. And I think for the long term, we'll continue to provide housing for, with the partners, you know, Mercy Housing and others, certainly Veterans Resource Center, as supportive partners for well over 100, about 150, I think, if I do the, do the math correctly. There's 47 units transitional.
46 transitional. There's an existing over 50 units here, and then there are another 50 associated with Phase Three.
And I think proximity to hospital, to other services, I think transportation, and certainly other opportunities that may exist, working with our Department of Economic Development in the county, along with the city and other, other partners, may provide some other opportunities in the future. But, so I don't have any questions. If there's questions by my colleagues, and I would invite the city of Rancho Cordova, if you're all willing to, the last, other than come here and add anything else. I know Mercy Housing was here the last time, too. So, so if you want to, like, Steve Dawes from Mercy's here as well, so.
This is a little bit higher than it was last time.
Right on your right side.
We need a mic. Oh, there it is. Thank you.
That's right. They put a big arrow on that, but on there.
It was a month ago. I got a lot shorter. Thank you again, Board of Supervisors, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. My name is Stephen Heisler with the city of Rancho Cordova. I don't have much to add to the presentation already given. I do want to give my appreciation to county staff, who've done a really good job of accurately conveying the many details of this project. And also, my appreciation for you and your partnership in getting this project done. We look forward to completing it very soon. And I'm happy to take your questions.
Okay. Any questions of our city staff? All right. That's a good thing, Stephen.
All right. Thank you very much.
Stephen, did you want to add anything? Mr. Dawes, on behalf of Mercy, who's been a real strong partner as well.
Hi. Good afternoon. Stephen Dawes with Mercy Housing, California. I too just really want to, want to thank everyone for this. The Phase Two, you know, is a little trickier thing to finance, and I think it's really the right thing prioritizing Phase Two. Phase Three still has a little, a little bit of work cut out for it, but there's some opportunities that we see upcoming that we should be able to, to bridge that smaller gap there before we break ground in early March, which we fully intend to. So both of them, with, with this approval, both of them should be breaking ground about the same time, which is just really exciting to see the, the complete vision for all three phases come together after, after all this work. We're so grateful for the partnership, the staff support, and the leadership supervisor have shown to bring us to this point. So really excited. Thank you very much.
Good. Thanks, Stephen. Thanks to Mercy for your willingness to, you know, be a partner in all of this. And I do want to note, too, it was noted in the staff report that Troy gave, that the vouchers of, again, Housing Development Agency, and working with, again, city of Rancho Cordova, and our county staff was able to make available. And that's really important. That's the long-term support for a number of the units, and helps by the services and the commitment that we need to be competitive in projects like this as a community. So with that being said, I want to again thank you, Mr. Gill, and your staff for, you know, working to bring this to us today. And I don't know if there's any other questions or comments by board members. One last thing I would suggest, in addition to this item, then, come, we're going to come back on the other properties. I've talked with a couple of representatives from economic development. I would like, maybe over the holiday, if you get a chance, maybe you and I, Mr. Gill, go out and drive the properties, do a little windshield survey, talk about some of the prospects and... I've talked with a couple of representatives from Economic Development. I would like, maybe over the holiday, if you get a chance, maybe you and I, Mr. Gill, go out and drive the properties, do a little windshield survey, talk about some of the prospects, and then get a package, come back before the board about marketing, you know, some of the properties that were actually in the initial staff report a few weeks ago, so.
Okay. We'll do that.
All right. Troy, anything else before? Okay, then, I have none. No one signed up to speak, so does anyone want to address this item? Seeing none, then the chair would move approval.
Second.
Okay, moving to second, please vote.
Unanimous vote with those members present.
Good. And they say the county's getting credit on everything they put out, Troy, so.
Mr. Gill, in all seriousness, we probably should send out some kind of a notice that we, of the action that we just took in light of our last few months and discussions. We will do that. Thank you.
Right. And I'm sure that members of this board will get invited to the groundbreaking. I know we were all invited previously to the dedication as well as the groundbreaking, so it's quite something. I know Supervisor Serna was there when we did the dedication and it was...
Very impressive.
Yeah. Okay, well, very good. Thank you to all and appreciate it, and we'll look forward to great things in 2018. Okay, next item, please.
Okay, for item number seventy is a request for waiver of appeal fees for appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying waiver of appeal fee by Mr. Raj Singh for, located at 4510 Stockton Boulevard.
Okay, so are we going to take these all in separate bites? Is that the intent, or do you want to call all the items at once?
I can call all of the items at once, yeah. They were agendized separately since they're...
I know.
Okay. Next is also a request for waiver of appeal fees for appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying waiver of appeal fee for a property located at 7749 Rose Pedal. Following that is the appeal of order after hearing to confirm report of abatement costs and resolution denying the appeal for properties located at 4510 Stockton Boulevard. And for item seventy-two, that property is located at 7749 Rose Pedal.
Okay, so we have all those items before. Anything else? Mr. Penrose, Mr. Chairman, want to weigh in, or are we going to go right to the staff report? Okay, all right.
I'm Deidra Andrus, Code Enforcement Manager. So before I go into all the items, I just want to bring to the board's attention that in this appeal, Mr. Singh raises the defense that the 4510 Stockton Boulevard vacant lot is under receivership and that he cannot enter the property. But the receiver was never able to gain control of the property because Mr. Singh refused to cooperate with the court order. And after the structures caught fire and were demolished by the county, the receivership complaint was dismissed on March thirteenth of 2015. Although the receiver was not, has not yet requested to be discharged by the court, there has been no receivership in this place since March thirteenth of 2015. The cost confirmation case for 4510 Stockton was not opened until August fourteenth of 2015, which is five months after the date the receivership complaint was dismissed. So I just want to put that, bring that before the board before I go into the items.
All right.
Now, on the first item, the fee waiver appeal for the Stockton Boulevard property. This property is largely, was largely neglected by the property owner, Mr. Singh. It is a source of neighborhood blight and an attractive nuisance for the transient population. The county was required to fence the property in order to abate the nuisance. Mr. Singh provided a declaration in support of his request for a waiver of the appeal fee. As a basis for a waiver, Mr. Singh claims that he survives on social security and that his monthly income is below the poverty threshold. However, he has provided no documentation to support his claims. Further, Mr. Singh is associated with a number of Sacramento County rental properties. In the absence of any documentation to support his request, his interest in multiple potentially income-generating rental properties throughout the area supported denying his request. Staff recommends denying the fee waiver, the waiver of appeal fee, as the county resources required to execute the appeal exceed the $700 fee. On to the next item, the waiver of appeal fee for the Rose Pedal address. The board-approved appeal fee covers the cost of county code enforcement and board staff to prepare for an appeal hearing. Waiver of this fee without supporting documentation will result in unfunded costs for the county to be covered by the general fund. Mr. Singh has provided no documentation to support his request, and significant resources have been expended to bring this board action. Therefore, staff recommends denying the waiver of the appeal fee. The county resources required to execute the appeal far exceed the $700 fee.
Okay.
We want to deal with the waiver, the appeal first, and then go into the items.
So, so the order, we're going to deal with the waiver first? So if the waiver's denied, then the appeal, walk through, give us the... What's, well, okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yes, the waiver of the fee for the appeal, and then on the appeal itself, which is the next item.
And depending what we do on the waiver request for the appeal, he can still appeal if we were to deny the waiver request, but then the $700 appeal fee, I assume we have that on deposit?
Yes, sir.
It's on deposit.
Okay. Okay, just a minute, Mr. Singh. I'm going to get to you. Anything else you wanted to point out?
He was notified that upon the decision of the board for the waiver request, he would have the opportunity to withdraw.
Okay, all right. That's an important point out. Okay.
Correct.
Any questions of Deidra? All right, if not, then stand by. Okay, Mr. Singh? And I want to be clear so you understand, we're not, we're going to hear the fee waiver request first, and that's the point. Those two requests are before us. In the event that the board were to deny the fee waiver, then you'll be given the opportunity to either withdraw the request, or if you want to still, the other two items have been duly noticed, to have those heard. That would then be covered by the appeal fee. So right now, what we're discussing, so for the moment, is the request for a waiver of the appeal fee on both, on the two properties as noted. So that's the point right now. So I'm going to give you six minutes on that, and then we get, then depending what we do on that, then we'll get to the discussion on the second part.
So you mean the six minutes on each item?
No, I'm giving you three minutes on each item. I'm giving you six minutes for the, for the fee waiver portion of it.
Oh, I see.
Okay, then if we, then we'll hear, we can hear the merits of the other portion about the abatement costs, abatement costs. We're just doing fee waivers, so keep your focus on why this board, to your request, should act as you've requested. So, okay, I'm going to put some time on the...
All right. I applied for fee waiver for two reasons. One is financial reasons, and second is...
Mr. Singh, would you identify yourself just for the record too? Just identify yourself before you start.
Oh, yeah, sure, sure, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, my name is Raj Singh. Everybody knows me.
Okay.
So what I'm saying that my fee waiver is, okay, so let me come back to the fee waiver.
Okay.
You know, I was, you know, I most of the time take the issues for public issues, for public benefits, those kind of things. So I'm decide, you know, requesting fee waiver on two reasons. One is on financial reasons. No court has denied, ever denied me any fee waiver, and I never heard any fee waiver denied to me based on my finances. And second thing is, I'm fighting for the public issues today. You know, I will present those, and if somebody brings the public issues, those people should be encouraged to bring those issues, you know. So based on those, financial statement I provided to the board in the meeting. Now, there was one issue also that if I apply in the court, the court says that the fee waiver should be confidential. But here I don't say it. I just requested to flow, and she told to me, "Well, hire an attorney." So what I'm saying that if somebody's applying based on the financial situation, it should be some kind of confidential and some kind of a guideline that even the clerk can waive that or something like that. I should not be here in public disclosing my financial assets, those kind of things, but I don't have any anyway. So that's all about it right now financially.
Okay, so...
And let me add something more. Some of the supervisors with me expressed very too much concern regarding these public issues. For example, on these properties, we were not allowed to be there. Receiver was there. Receiver was not even informed about these costs. Receiver is not requesting, according to law, only court has the right to fire the receiver. And there's no court order to fire the receiver. And court, the receiver, according to law, the cost should be submitted, the work should be done by receiver, and cost should be submitted to the court. When the receiver is being appointed, county is out. However, receiver in this case was appointed by the county. So what it means that, that we are not allowed to go to the property, they are not required to inform to us even... I sent the email to all the supervisors around one week ago, I mean, ten days ago or so, that we are not allowed to go to the property. And we are not allowed to, we are not informed. And on tape, by the way, this is the first time, when the county officials admitted that, that owner has no right, except to pay the bills. I mean, except, no, sorry. Owner has no right. He cannot go to the property. He cannot do anything. He should not be informed, and, but he has to pay the bills. That kind of situations even is not acceptable under the dictators. And that happened in words of county officials, not by words, their officials. That's all.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Singh. Okay, so we're going to take up the first matter, relates to the fee waiver. You've explained as to why you think we should waive the fee, and that's on both of the noted properties, the Stockton Boulevard and the Rose Pedal property. So we're going to take that up. So if you'll stand by for a moment, we'll hear, and then depending what we do on that, then you'll be given the opportunity. So let's not pre-clip what we're going to do here. So just stand by for a moment. You have a seat and we'll...
Okay.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on this. I did want to just confirm, did he submit information regarding any background as related to why the fee waiver?
He asked for me to interpret the law, and I redirected him under the direction of the county council's office to seek a private attorney to interpret the law for him in terms of what his rights were regarding confidentiality.
Okay, okay. All right, so we have items seventy and seventy-one, which are the fee waiver, appeal fee requests, and we have the recommendation for denial. We've heard from Mr. Singh. Is there any other questions or of staff? If not, entertain motion.
Move staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, it's moved second to approve the staff recommendation, which is to deny the fee waiver request. And if there's nothing further than...
Is that on both fee waiver requests?
That's on both, that's on both Rose Pedal and Stockton, or is it on...
Yeah, I thought we were considering them all together.
Yeah.
I just want to confirm.
Yeah. So, okay, so that's, so that's on the fee waiver request for both, let me state the addresses again, for 4510 Stockton and 7749 Rose Pedal. This is only the fee waiver request for the appeal. All right, nothing further? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, so now procedurally, we've denied the fee waiver for the appeal, Mr. Singh. We still have the appeal before us, but if you want to have those items heard, seventy-two and seventy-three, then the full appeal fee, the $700 on both properties, will now be in force and effect. You have the ability to withdraw that if you choose, but if you want to go forward, then that, and we have checks, or how do we...
We have a check, a cashier's check for $1,400.
Okay, so now, kind of a crossroads, if you want to be heard on the full abatement portion of the matter, we can do that, but that will be the $1,400 and will go to the county. You want to go ahead? Oh, you withdraw, you withdraw?
No.
Oh, we'll go forward, okay, all right. So I want to be, I want to be clear. So you, all right, so the applicant, appealing tends to go forward with items seventy-two and seventy-three. Okay, then Ms. Anderson, then we'll give Mr. Singh some more time to talk to the merits. Okay.
Okay, on the next item, 4510 Stockton Boulevard. The purpose of the cost confirmation hearing is for the county to recover the costs that expended, that it expended to bring the properties into compliance. For the property located at 4510 Stockton Boulevard, the enforcement case was open on August fourteenth, 2015, due to overgrown vegetation and a homeless/transient camp at the property. The county was not able to close the case to compliance until October seventeenth, 2016, fourteen months later. A letter was sent to Mr. Singh on August, in August of 2015, after the property was found to be in violation, requesting that he clean the property prior to the initial inspection. The initial inspection on November tenth, 2015, found evidence of transient activity on the property as well as overgrown vegetation and junk and rubbish being stored throughout the property. Violation notice was sent and initial inspection fee of $470 was charged. Property was cleaned, but the case remained open for monitoring due to high transient activity and numerous citizen complaints. During inspection on February tenth, 2016, the property was again found in violation. A $335 inspection fee was charged. The property was again placed in a monitoring status but found in violation on May tenth, 2016, August ninth, 2016, and September thirtieth, 2016. Each time, a $335 inspection fee was charged. Code enforcement received multiple complaints regarding this property from citizens concerned about neighborhood blight and the attraction of the unmaintained lot for transients. Code enforcement enlisted the assistance of the Sheriff's Department's work project to clean up the property on multiple occasion. Mr. Singh was not charged for those cleanups. However, the county has, was required to use county-funded contractors to fence the property on two separate occasions, in January and June of 2016. The county contacted, fence scene was completed at a cost of $1,086.80 in January and $543.40 in June. A notice of pending enforcement action was also recorded on the property title on October twenty-seventh, 2016, at a cost of $261. Certified mailings were sent to all parties of interest and posted at the property regarding all hearings. The county is seeking to recover a total of $4,934.77 in hard costs for bringing this property into compliance, and is asking that the board deny this appeal and require Mr. Singh to repay the county the funds it expended to bring this property into compliance.
Take these, I guess, separately then. So this, this is the Stockton Boulevard property?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and take that one first, so. Mr. Singh, you're welcome to come forward. I'm going to give you five minutes this time around to, and this is now on the merits of the costs that have been leaned against the property, so this is now your opportunity to talk about the merits of the case.
Yes, five minutes.
Yes, I'm going to reset it, yes.
All right. By the court order, we were not allowed to go there. There was a receiver on the request of the county. This is a property where people were burned on the watch of the receiver. You know, most of the time, the homeowner comes here and they, they express their views and their, their things are being denied. But here, the county, in the court, expressed that receiver is the best person to take care of the property. And there was a fire on one structure, second structure after some time, third structure after some time, fourth structure after some time. I never talked to the receiver, so the blame, finding of the hearing officer that I interfered the receiver or something is completely false. These kind of hearings takes place here. Now, as a homeowner, the person is not allowed to go there by the court order. The receiver cannot be discharged by the court order. The receiver has to submit, has to do the work, and has to submit to the court to get the expenses. No money can be authorized otherwise. Now here, the county interfered the whole process and said, "Okay, Mr. Singh, you go there. You do not go there. We are charging this money." Was the receiver not an interested party? Was, the court was not an interested party. Both were not informed. Standing here saying that all the interested party was informed is completely lie. We don't know what happened there because we were not allowed to be there. We don't know what is required because by court order, receiver is supposed to do that work. We are not supposed to provide any money because the court has to approve those costs. It was the request for the county. And in this case, the county informed, testified, and that's why, if you want to deny here, listen to tape. The tape will say this, that the owner has no right. He cannot, he should not be informed. They will do the work. They will, they will not inform even, they will not provide even a chance to do the work. inform even, they will not provide even a chance to do the work. So if they do the work for a million dollars, they will charge a million dollars. And that's what exactly happened in one of the property. $200,000 worth of inverse county, worth of penalties. In other words, county took the money just by putting the penalties. That's a constitutional limit. And that's why it suggests that the county on other occasions should decide what, what should be the maximum penalty the county should impose against a homeowner. And I suggest that limit is around $2,000 because after $2,000, the homeowners who doesn't know the law is try to find the lawyers. But anyway, what I'm saying that, the basic fundamental mistakes are done and everything wrong has been admitted on the tape. I need not to say about it. If I don't talk to the receiver, I'm still being blamed to, to stop him to do the work. I never talked to him. These are findings. These are statements by the county officials who can lie, sitting here in front of you. Just, this is the first time we are catching red-handed. So what I'm saying that, the owner, who's not being allowed, who's by law, he's being advised by the attorneys, just wait for the cost. County attorneys, every county officials, I, I describe one authority, has to be absolute neutral, not only neutral, absolute neutral. County attorney, Susan Masarway, complained to the district attorney. I was sitting with district attorney. Came to know all the false informations. According to law, any attorney lies is a crime. But it was given to them. I sit down with them and they were very sympathetic, that how it is happening. So what I'm saying that, here, we are facing with that, okay, the county took the position in the court that receiver is, is the best person who can take care of the property. Then why we are being asked to charge any money? Is any order which says that we can go back to the property? The answer is no. Is there any report by the receiver? The answer is no. Is there any order which says that receiver is being dismissed? The answer is no. So this is all about it. That's how the wrong findings happen. You don't talk to the receiver, but the findings comes here in front of the board of supervisors. I interrupted the receiver. Hey, I didn't talk. That's all about it.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Singh. Okay. Just a question for staff. Deidre, when you were pointing out, so what was the terms relative to the receiver? Mr. Singh obviously has addressed it from his perspective, and you said there was no receiver for a while or?
That's correct.
So if you could use those, give the dates again, please.
Sure. Go back to my notes, I'm sorry. So the receivership complaint was dismissed on March 13th of 2015, and the case that we are asking to affirm the cost on was opened on August 14th of 2015.
So the receiver, the receiver was dismissed in, in March of 2015?
The receivership complaint was dismissed in March.
Complaint.
Yes, sir. Now, if you, if you need to go into the details of the receivership and how that's structured, I'd have to defer to my county counsel. Susan Masarway, she could help me sort of.
Well, I guess I just want to understand, I've heard, heard Mr. Singh's testimony, I just want to understand, because I heard you say something was, complaint was dismissed, but did, what was it, under receivership or not? Was there, was there, was there a receiver for the property, was there somebody else that was given partial or whole responsibility?
Good afternoon. So just to clarify, the county did have a complaint filed against the properties, both 4510 Stockton Boulevard and 3929 Baker, for a receivership. As Deidre mentioned in her report prior to beginning, the receiver was never able to gain control over the property despite the court order. Mr. Singh refused to cooperate. This is a case of public record, you could spend hours reading about it. What we did do was, once the buildings caught fire, which is public record, the county just demolished those buildings for public safety, and once the buildings were demolished, there was no need to even try and pursue the receivership. So we dismissed the complaint at that time. So there was no receivership in place, which means that left, that leaves a receiver out there with no court order to act upon and no property to be receiver over. It's the receiver's duty to then apply to the court for discharge as an officer of the court.
You got a question, Ms. Ross?
And they never did that.
To my knowledge, we've never been received notice. It's, the receiver's actually gone. We don't even know where he is. He's in, apparently moved to Nevada and hasn't finalized. I've notified the court. I submitted a letter to the court notifying them that, but that doesn't affect the status of the receivership because there is no receivership, therefore no receiver could act on the property.
So the bottom line is, is that it's, it's our belief in the statements that, that Mr. Singh was in control of the property and owner, however that owner is structured, but he's at least in part with family or whatever, but that the receiver never gained control of the property and that Mr. Singh then was responsible because he, in essence, had control whether he was able to sort that through the courts or not, but it could, is that, is that correct, Sissy?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions of counsel or code officer?
Yes.
Yeah, Ms. Ross?
There was a, I think there was a discrepancy. You mentioned $4,700, but the report says 5243, and I was wondering if I'm reading that wrong. The amount of, of the charges.
Right. Let me just check.
The report of costs lists 52.
Yeah, 52, 524305. I'm sorry, that's correction.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So the full amount that's being asked to, to be confirmed?
Is $5,243.05.
Okay. That's what the staff report said. Okay. And so the actual appeal is appealing the hearing officer's determination, that's what's before us today?
Yes, he's appealing the confirmed report of costs. We had those costs confirmed before hearing, hearing officer on October 3rd, and Mr. Singh is appealing that decision.
Okay. And these are the full total amount of costs. If confirmed, then there's no other outstanding charges, at least as of this date, is that right?
No, sir, not for this, not for this.
Not for this property, not for 4510 Stockton Boulevard. All right.
But, but then it's incumbent upon him to keep the property clean after this, or this, we could be back here again. Is that correct?
That's correct. Another case could be opened if we continue to get complaints. And that would be, you know, then they would start to accrue additional, brand-new charges, but not for this particular case.
And we've made him aware of that in writing, that, I mean, obviously we've.
Mr. Singh has a long history with the county and code enforcement, so he does have a number of cases. So he's very familiar with the process.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. No other questions of code officers?
Can I be heard on this?
I'm sorry, Ms. Singh?
Can I be heard on this?
Well, we, we heard, unless Ms. Frost has a question from, of you, Mr. Singh, did you have a question, Mr. Singh?
No, I.
Okay.
My, my question was of, of staff to ask, is he been well notified that he needs to, this is going to continue, this could happen again, and we could be back here again.
Exactly. So can I be heard on this?
I'll, I'll allow you one minute to the podium, one, because typically we've already done the hearing, but you're, you're welcome, if there's new information, and this is important, so I'm going to give you, we'll give you one minute.
All right.
Okay. Because typically we don't do this, Mr. Singh, but I'm allow you.
Yes. What I'm trying to say is this, that whenever receivership, anything comes along, as they did not give the notice to all interested party, as, as here, I'm, I'm just recommending one thing, that first of all, there is, this case deserves the investigations, that how the county officials lie, okay? The homeowner should not be subject to this kind of things. A second thing, I'm just saying that, all the things about the receivership was decided in absence of receiver. How the county can do that? And that's why all the interested party should be informed. I interfered, I interfered the receiver, I did not talk to the receiver. No talking, nothing with the receiver. Now, another thing is this, the homeowner should not be looted like this, you know? So what I'm trying to say is this, that, the amount was presented differently than she say. The amount was presented, whatever amount is presented should be the final. And for further actions, they should go to the court and take care of this. Because receiver and court, when they become in charge, it's not like county can interfere that. So the real process is not resolving with this, is a court. Once a court is involved, receivership involved, court is involved. The court is involved, it is the court.
Okay. All right, Mr. Singh. Thank you for your summary. Okay. All right. We've heard from the appellant and from staff, any other questions, and what's the board's opinion on this?
Move the, move staff's recommendation.
Okay. It's moving second then to basically deny the appeal and confirm the report of a basement cost at the amount of $5,243.05. That's the motion. Please vote. This is for 4510 Stockton Boulevard.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right. Next item.
This is Deidre Anderson for county code enforcement, this last item. Again, the purpose of the cost confirmation hearings for the county to recover the costs that it expended to bring the property into compliance. We had two separate code enforcement cases with, that were taken a code, cost confirmation hearing for the property located at 7749 Rose Pedal Way. CODH 2013 405 is open on May 23rd, 2013, due to a referral from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department reporting no power or no gas at the home. Code enforcement conducted an inspection on May 23rd, 2013, confirming multiple violations, including no hot, no hot water and no power. The property remained in violation for several months, requiring four additional inspections before finally being brought into substantial compliance after 11 months in April of 2014. The case incurred $1,864.30 in board-approved fees during the course of enforcement, and as a result of non-payment of fees, was taken to cost confirmation hearing on October 3rd, 2017, for the county to recover the cost incurred to bring the property into compliance. Due to renewed nuisance activity, CODX 2016 901 was open on March 7th, 2016, based on a complaint alleging major automotive repair, yard parking, operating a business without a license, and a commercial vehicle stored on the property in a residential parcel. An inspection on April 5th, 2016 confirmed multiple violations on the property, and five additional inspections were conducted before the property was brought into substantial compliance a year later, on March 13th, 2017. In addition to multiple inspections, mailings, and postings, this case required a nuisance hearing to obtain compliance and accrued $4,448.67 in board-approved fees by the time the enforcement activities were completed. The property owner did not appeal the nuisance hearing decision. This case was also taken to cost confirmation hearing on October 3rd, 2017, to recover those costs as mandated by the board and county code. Mr. Singh elected to contest the cost confirmation hearing for both cases, incurring additional cost. Mr. Singh is appealing the order after hearing to confirm report of abatement cost for both cases in the amount of $6,313.97. Staff is recommending that you deny this appeal.
Okay. Any questions of Deidre at this point? All right. If not, thanks. Mr. Singh, you're, come forward again. Once again, give you five minutes on this one. This is Rose Pedal Way.
So I understand that the previous matter has been, I have to pay the cost, am I right?
Right. We, we affirmed the cost in the previous matter, correct?
Okay. Then I request that in, I mean, investigation should be done, everything is in tape. Otherwise, okay, now, let me go, let, otherwise, you know, we will see these lies here, and that's not right. By the way, there is another thing is also the constitutional limit, means that if the county can skip on putting the penalties and take the proper, the whole property, then it is just like, no county is doing without any, you know, the county has more power. But anyway, regarding 7749 Rose Pedal Way, what happened that on these properties, some, some squatters were moved in. I called the county and county didn't help. So I was in the process of eviction and everything was being informed to the code enforcement. Code enforcement do not listen. They don't return the call, they don't do anything. They just listen, the tenants, oh, sorry, not tenants, occupants, I say. So I was in the process of evicting them, and what happens, there's, there's a policy of the code enforcement, and by the way, I forgot that, I took one time the deposition of Mr. Chamberlain, and he testified regarding that property, that he's not happy with the receiver, those kind of things. And I suggested to Susan Masarway, take, to take the action to go to court and take care of, action for receivership for that property. But anyway, let's go back to the Rose Pedal Way. So these people were there, and the county has the policy that whenever there is an eviction, they will not put any cost. The reason behind is this, that they will not interfere the landlord and tenant, or landlord or any occupant relationship, you know? We provide all the documents, the cost is still there, and they don't listen to owner completely, they completely ignore, you know? So this is a one-way street. Now, the, these squatters, they find new way of living there. Luckily, this property is very nice, has the bank loan. For the hearing, bank was not informed. Again, another interested party. The occupants who were there were not informed, they are also interested party. In the hearing also, this is my first time I'm in front of board of supervisors, in other hearings, the county's attorney said that I cannot come and represent in the hearing. The count, this is the first time the, the hearing officer overruled her and allowed me for the hearing. Otherwise, things were going, you know, without hearing even. The cost was confirming, you know, against the properties without hearing. First time today, I talked to county, she, she called me indeed, I, you know, then she admitted that anybody should be allowed for the hearing. So what I'm saying that, until now, everything was going unopposed, and these squatters managed to live there and put the cost. So in other words, what I see here is this, that the home, the owner is already victim of these squatters, and the county comes in and charges the money for the things which is inside the house. Inside the house is not a public nuisance. It is not. It is between owner and the occupant. You know, based on that, the sheriff don't evict the occupants as they're supposed to, even if there are squatters. So what I'm saying that, on one hand, the county treats that everything inside the house is between the owner and the occupants, and is a private nuisance. Of course, if there is a nuisance, then of course, he, they have the right to go to the court and, or they have the right not to pay the money for the rent, those kind of things. The county don't ask even, there's no exhibit, there's nothing, no evidence, and they cannot be, that they were, people were paying because they didn't pay. They don't ask even. They just see anybody, they just assume, they move forward. So in this way, the county is in fact helping the squatters, and the inside, everything is, okay. Now, county made another thing also during the hearing, that. that I cannot, I mean, I have to keep the house even for squatters up to date. Means that whenever squatters are in, or something like that, they do not allow us to turn off electric, turn off water, or anything, and they expect that even for squatters, we have to have a standard, otherwise they will cite us. In other words, everything between the occupants there and the landlord is between them. Why the county is interfering? County can interfere only in public nuisance, causing problem to the public, not to individual parties.
Okay, Mr. Singh?
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Singh, I just wanted to ask you one question. This case involves not just the, this time that the alleged squatters were there, and when the housing code was in violation, but then subsequent to that, when, I assume you had a renter in there where there was other alleged activity, including major repair, commercial vehicles being stored on the property and so forth. So this, just so you'll understand, I guess it's not so much a question as a comment, that this case that we have on Rose Petal has two components, the 2013-14 piece of that related to the conditions that you just spoke to, and then a subsequent one, a year or two later, when there was another, I guess, renter there that had other issues. And so this whole case, which amounts to $6,312.97, has two components to it. So I just wanted to be clear on that. So it's not solely the issue you spoke to. There was another subsequent situation on this same property, after you corrected the first violation, so.
That's what I'm saying, that once we evict, and that's why I'm pointing out the county policy, when I evict somebody, they should, there's a policy. So what I'm saying, that county did not follow its own policy in cost confirmation. What I'm saying that, I'm evicting, I don't like those people.
Right, I get that.
Okay, so what I'm saying that, why county is involved, why county is coming when everything is okay? You know, those people knowingly will, will, they're the people who, who take out the parts and sell it, make money. There are squatters. But property has the bank loan also, and bank is also one of the interested party. So legally, the bank was not informed, and this cost should not be confirmed.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Singh. Okay. All right, any questions, Mr. Singh or county staff? All right, see no questions. All right. And the, confirm the amount, and is $6,312.97, that's correct, and that's for both cases?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay. All right, very good. Okay.
Move denial of the appeal?
Second.
Okay, move in second to deny the appeal and confirm the abatement cost at the Rose Petal, excuse me, 7749 Rose Petal, and the cost, firm cost being $6,312.97. All right, see nothing further, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Singh. Thank you, our staff. That concludes the appeal hearing.
Yes, it does.
Next time.
Is county executive comments?
None this afternoon.
Okay. Board member, we do have some speakers off agenda, and there's an item.
Actually, I did have one item, I'm sorry, I was too quick. I wanted to point out to the board that you have a receive and file item on impact fees. Every, we are required by AB 1600 to file a report with the board on how we're using impact fees that we collect in different areas. I just want to spotlight that, that report's in front of you, and it's part of our record, and going forward, we are going to make this into a timed item and make a more formal presentation, but I wanted to acknowledge that report was provided to you today.
Okay, I appreciate you pointing out, we had a chance to talk about this yesterday, and I do believe as well, that, I know we bring the Miller Roost districts annually, and that gets on consent calendar, but I think we probably ought to have both of these items, in the event that there are questions. Some of those may be more pro forma, routine than others, and some of those Miller Roost districts are just now on basically paying off the incurred debt, but there are still some improvements in some of those, and some of those are in other jurisdictions, including the cities of Ranch Crenova and Elk Grove. But this one, the development fee portion, I think, as we see activity, identified projects and so forth, should rise to a level, certainly not on just the receiving file, it should be a scheduled item. So I appreciate you bringing that forward now, and we'll, so, until this time next year that we'll see.
Yeah, it'll be November, December timeframe.
Okay, but herefore, we're going to go to.
Yes.
Or here going forwards, excuse me. Okay. I'll come back to board member comments in a moment. We do have a few off agenda speakers, and so I want to take those, and I'll take them, the order they were handed to me, if there's a particular order you want to approach the podium. This is, I have Nicole Carter, Alicia Lozano, and Pamela Mondragon, and if there are others, I'll, again, recognizing this are some of our IHSS workers, so if, I'm going to come forward, and I'll put a maximum time of 15 minutes up for anyone who wants to speak on this item. I just have the three of you, though.
Do you guys provide translation at all?
We, we don't, not on the fly.
Okay, yeah, if we make previous arrangements, we can, but if you can do that, okay, so just a second, let me get the clocks out here. Okay.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Alicia. Yo trabajo por el programa Echeza Sen, y solo vengo a pedir un salario justo porque lo que nos pagan apenas nos alcanza para renta y viles, y no nos queda dinero para, por estas, en estas fiestas no tenemos regalos para nuestras familias. Es todo. Gracias.
She said, "My name is Alicia Lozano. I am a provider for IHSS." She said, "I'm here to ask for a fair wage. With the amount that we are being paid now, it's not enough to be paying for rent, as well as for the rest of our bills." She said, "This Christmas season, she's not going to be able to purchase gifts for her loved ones," and she said, "So she's here to ask for a just wage."
Okay. Thank you, Alicia.
Feliz Navidad.
So happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you. Merry, Merry Christmas. Okay, I have Pamela or Nicole? We can get a handheld mic there if that makes it easier, or?
Hi, I'm Pamela Mondragon, and I'm a recipient of IHSS in Sacramento County. This was brought to my attention about two months ago, when I was, when I went to an orientation, and I realized that the people who were taking care of me were only making $10.80 an hour to run errands for me, to bathe me, to provide me with the care that the county says that I need. And when I put that to my, in my head, I'm going, $10.80 an hour, that's not fair. For all that they do, for all that they put out, it's, I mean, when the guy at Taco Bell who pushes a little button and says, "This is a taco," he's making $15 an hour, and he has no one to support, other than maybe himself, or maybe, but these people, they take it of time out of their lives to care for people like myself, and this is one of my caretakers here.
Santa.
And
Yes.
It, it, it worries me to think that he's only making $10.80 an hour, which is not fair. I feel that it is only just and fair that they be at least compensated a fair wage for all that they provide. I mean, for the, for the responsibilities that they take on, and I feel that in my heart, I mean, I just, I just can't believe it. I mean, and I took upon being, being part of this union to see that our voices are heard, and that, that what they feel is just, is fair, and I just, I want it to be heard, and that's why I'm here today, is to make sure that the people who take it, all of, all of the love and the care and the dedication to become nurses, taxi people, errand people, nurses, whatever, that they be compensated for that.
Okay.
And this is Michael Young, and he is my caretaker.
Go ahead. Well, thanks, Pamela. Michael?
All right.
Okay, all right, very good.
And thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing, Pamela, and Michael for your good care service. Okay. I've heard from Alicia, and then Pamela, so I have Nicole Carter. Nicole? Santa's helper. Hi, Nicole.
Good afternoon. I am Nicole Carter. I am with SEIU 2015. I'm currently a care provider for a private agency. I am here on behalf of multiple care providers and not just with IHSS. I currently live with three seniors that could be benefit with IHS employers, and that could very well potentially succeed with the benefits that providers can give. With the unfair wages of workers, as being a care provider for other families, I need somebody there to take care of my own family. I can't do both, as much as I try, and I have my own family that I'm creating, and I need to be able to take care of my children and my future. And it's, it's really hard to do that with what we have, that the county is giving us in wages. Right now, we can't even pay our bills, or even put food on the table, and it's a really difficult time, especially in the holidays, when you want to have cheer, and you want to be able to celebrate, and celebrate life even, and it's just really hard to do so. There are three generations in my house, my grandmother, my mother, and I, and I'm creating a fourth generation. And so it might sound nice that we all live together, and like I said before, I would love to take care of all my family members, at the same time, I'm trying to provide for other families that need my help. So, to be able to provide an income to where I could live on my own, be able to support myself, be able to support my family, is very important to me. It's not just about money, it's just about how well we can take care of our family members and clients that we provide for. The better wages we get, the more care that we can provide, or we're going to want to provide them with that. Also, not a statistic or anything, but in my belief, I would feel like we'd have to work 20 hours overtime to even accommodate a better living style, not so much of the rich lifestyle, but just to be able to make meet-ins. We'd have to be allotted overtime, and a lot of companies don't allot that, and it's really sad. So in result, as I am Santa's little helper, and I do report to him, your unwillingness to support IHS funding has caused many suffering, not in just my family, in multiple families, and as well as the workers. So, as you're present, we're giving you a lump of coal, unfortunately. So hopefully, you're, you can hear our advice, and take it with some, some grain of salt, and hopefully, we can see you on the brighter side of things. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Nicole. That was all the speakers I had sign up. That was, okay, that's a full complement, all right? And we thank you for sharing, for speaking with us today, and certainly, I think, for making the point about the impacts to those you serve and those of you who are serving, so. All right, with that, then, that's the last speakers I have for the board, and I'll go my colleagues in, starting to my leftist time. Any items you wish to call? Okay. All right, with that, then, we will return the session tomorrow at 2:00 for one continued item for today, and the balance of the agenda, and, and is there, Madam Clerk, anything you wanted to?
I don't have anything new.
Okay. And we do have closed session at 1:30, and then 2:00 open session with one continued item, so. All right, with that, we will be adjourned.